With our indication and pledge of allegiance, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Daniel Ethington from the LDS Church who's here with us tonight. Daniel? Please come on up.
Our dear, kind, gracious Father which art in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this evening. We give thee thanks for the opportunity that we have to be here united as leadership and representatives here of the Casa Grande area. Father, we pray this night that thy Spirit will be with us, especially with those that will be participating in the several agenda items and discussing the needs of this city and its surrounding areas that... We pray that we can be inspired, Father, that might be able to make those decisions that will be of most benefit for, for the community. Father, at this time, we pray a blessing be over those that are suffering at this time here in this great nation in which we live at the hands of the recent hurricane. We pray they'll please be with their families and be with those first responders that are rushing to their aid, that they'll might be protected, watched over, and cared for. Father, we love thee very much, are grateful for thy many blessings, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to live here in this free land and worship as we choose and express our feelings. We love thee again, Father, and these things we humbly pray for and ask and say in the sacred name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ethington, and thank you, Matt. First item on, of item B on the agenda tonight is roll call. And note that Mary is absent. Someone would like to offer an excuse? Move to excuse.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Mary Corstens from tonight's council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Please note, everyone's here and Mary is excused. Gloria?
So noted.
Thank you.
Mayor McFarland, the minutes tonight, we have the city council regular meeting minutes, which I move we approve from September 4th, and to accept for the record, the police advisory board meeting minutes from April 12th, airport advisory board, June 26th, Casa Grande Youth Commission, August 5th, and the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes from June 10th, as they are presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Claims against the city? D1.
Mayor McFarland, I'm in for approval of claims against the city for August 29th through September 11th, as presented.
Second. All right. Claims against the city has been motioned and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain, Mayor.
Okay. Note that Lisa will abstain. Any other? Anyone disapprove? Okay. So the claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes, Larry, from staff?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Any changes from the council?
No.
Okay, seeing no changes then, I have none.
Move approval of the meeting agenda.
Yes, okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's approved. Larry, we, oh, we could do it during... Do we do it during the open?
Call public.
Call, call public, okay. Next item are the consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anyone have anything that you want to remove from the consent agenda? Anybody from the audience? Okay, seeing none, then go ahead.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of consent agenda, as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is item H, under the public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to? I'll open the floor, and if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council, please step forward. We got some... Oh, Larry, didn't I? No. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Manny Bowler. I'm the executive director of The United Way, and our address currently is 402 East 10th Street in Casa Grande.
And Mary Lou?
And this is my friend, Mary Lou Rosales. She's with Cara. She's from Eloy. I don't know the address. But I think it's on Sunshine Boulevard.
That's where it got its name, Sunshine.
It's sunshine, right? The reason that I'm here today, that we're here today, is because The United Way is giving the city council and the city of Casa Grande an award, and it was awarded at our annual dinner a week or so ago, but we thought we would bring it to you tonight because it's, it's for everybody. So in thinking about how to thank you and express the magnitude of what we've accomplished together, I was brought back to my kindergarten teaching days, and I know that I learned everything in life about, that I ever needed to know in kindergarten, playing in the sandbox, right? So Dr. Seuss is one of my favorite authors, and he says things so eloquently that I want to share with you just a little bit about Dr. Seuss. One of my favorite books with Dr. Seuss is The Waiting Place. I'm sure you've all read it. I'm gonna read just a little bit, and then, trust me, I'm gonna wrap it all up. "You can get so confused that you'll start inter-race down the wrong, down the long, wiggled road at a break-necking pace and grind down for miles across weirdish-wild space headed, I fear, towards a most useless place, the waiting place." You know, wait, people are waiting for a train to go, or a bus to come, or a plane to go, or the mail to come, or the rain to go, or the phone to ring, or the snow to snow, or waiting around for a yes or a no, or waiting for your hair to grow. Everyone is just waiting, waiting for the fish to bite, or waiting for the wind to fly a kite, or waiting around for Friday night, or waiting perhaps for their Uncle Jake, or a pot to boil, or a better break, or a string of pearls, or a pair of pants, or a wiggle of curls, or another chance. Everyone is just waiting. And as a community, we could have waited for someone else to make a decision on what to do about homelessness. We could have waited. We could have been happy with the status quo and got, we could have just left it be. Instead, you became the you character in this book, and you moved your feet, and you made decisions, and you followed. You didn't allow things to be acted upon you. You were proactive, and you acted upon the community, and you brought us together. And we're no longer waiting, we are actually moving. And for this reason, The United Way, on behalf of the Chronic Homeless Coalition, has presented the city of Casa Grande the Community Impact Innovator Award, which is for the homelessness task force. So, there it is. See, I told you I'd wrap it all up.
Lisa?
You guys are the ones.
This is a useless bunch.
Ah, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Manny. I have, do have one speaker card here. Is there anyone else who would like to come up, other than the speaker card that I have here? Oh. Two. All right, Richard, you can go next. Nope. You're not, Richard.
I'm Maguire, 941 East Penny Lane. I just wanted to piggyback quickly on the word waiting. Obviously, today is a day, we've, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting for the news that we got today for a very long time. And it's really great to finally get the official word that our friends at Lucid have got some funding, and hopefully we can move along. There's still, obviously, a couple more decisions you guys need to make and approve, and the county's involved. And it's not 100% done, but it sure seems, feels to me like we're pretty close and things are looking pretty good. And I appreciate all the work that staff and the council has done on that. It's interesting, though, still, there's, out there in the public, we have to keep reminding them how important this is. I posted two things on CG Cat today. One of them was Lucid, and it got X number of likes and reactions and comments, et cetera. But then I posted about the Panda Express Envalago coming, and it got three times as many likes and comments and reactions to it. So it's still the little things that people really pay attention to on a daily basis, mainly because I believe they just don't really understand the impact that this is gonna have, and how many more Panda Expresses this is gonna be able to bring us in the future. So, again, congratulations to Lucid and to the council, and I hope we get these last few hurdles closed up pretty quick, and we see some bulldozers in the ground soon.
Thank you, Jones. We, ditto, we agree. You, you wanted to be last, so you're not up yet. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Council, Richard Rosales, 462 West Casa Grande X Boulevard. Also here representing APS Community Affairs. And I just wanted to take a brief moment to explain a proposition that APS is adamantly opposed to. Proposition 127, the name of it is called Clean Energy for a Healthy Arizona, and that's where the name stops. We all want clean energy, we all want a healthy Arizona, but the ramifications of this proposition are gonna be devastating to Arizona. As you know, it's funded by a California billionaire, so they're trying to bring California politics into Arizona. The, the premise behind this is to mandate and change our constitution to require public utilities to get 50% of their energy from renewable, clean resources. And we, they don't include Palo Verde, which is carbon-free and one of the largest-producing power plants in the country. So that is one of the reasons why APS is opposed to it. The big reason is that it will, we're looking at studies that have looked at what it would do to the bills for our customers, and it would actually double our customers' bills by having to comply with the mandate, which is only 12 years away. So that is the biggest reason why. And the irony here is that if customer bills go up and we have to build all this infrastructure, APS would actually profit more from this. So it's kind of interesting that a public utility is opposing this when we would actually profit more from it. But we're not into short-term profits, we're into long-term growth, and we wanna, we want Arizona to remain competitive with the other states. All these projects that are coming here wouldn't have come here if we would have had rates like California does currently. Their rates are 50% higher than Arizona rates, and they are growing at three times the national average of rates. So, just wanted to let everyone know the reasons why APS is opposed to it, and we would like our customers and the public to just educate themselves on the proposition and make the right choice when it comes up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. All right, Mr. Odom and Mrs. Hadad. Now it's your turn.
My name is Jerry Odom, and most of you know me, and some of you probably like to forget me. I'm not, and I'm not gonna present anything to you tonight. She is going to do the presenting. I'm just up here to introduce her. And this is Catherine Hadad. I got to know her, her husband, I don't know how many years ago, when they first started coming down from Canada and spending the winters down here. And she made a permanent residence down here, and she's a, a writer, she's a published writer, and that's what we want to be, she'll want to be talking about. We hope to come back in a couple of weeks with an agenda item to do what she's wanting to do. And, Miss Mayor, is it all right if I pass out her business cards to the council members?
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Hadad.
I'm Catherine Maddox Hadad, and I've lived here 10 years. Let's bring the lucrative movie and television industry here to Casa Grande. I have been approached by a movie and television producer who is interested in turning my eight novel series into an eight-year television weekly series, and he would like to do it here. If he comes, this will bring many jobs because my books require lots of extras. It will bring many jobs to the area, and it will help with the tourist income for the city, which would have to be explained later. I am a member of the Arizona Production Association, the Arizona Film and Media Coalition, the Phoenix Screenwriters Association, and the Writers Guild of America West. I have the backing of Matthew Earl Jones, who is the director of film and media with the Arizona Commerce Authority. And I look forward to meeting all of you to discuss this very, very lucrative proposal in the very near future.
I'm on, miss, one, one other thing. The reason we'd like to be back here in a couple of weeks or so, and having it on the agenda, is she wanted to film this out at North Mountain Park, and we had to have your permission to do that. And, of course, in Casa Grande, it'd be mentioned in the credits and, of course, filming everything else at that time, so, thank you.
Okay, we'll get, we'll have staff follow up with you. Mike, could you leave your card with Mr. Rains over here?
Chief, and there are rains here, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so you're already in touch, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just if, everybody knows Jerry is a former councilman here in Casa Grande, so.
Okay. Anyone else like to address the council before I close the floor? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the floor for public comments, and we'll move on to item I1. Chief?
Mayor and council members, it is recommended that the mayor and council adopt an ordinance to purchase Motorola portable radios from Motorola Solutions under the Arizona Contract ADSPO 13-036880 for an amount not to exceed $185,384.65. This project is made possible through the city's capital replacement program for fiscal year 2018-19. This project is a four-year project, four-phase approach to replacing all the city of Casa Grande Fire Department radios reaching their end of life. Phase one was completed in fiscal year 2016 and 17, in which we bought our first batch of portables. Phase two was completed in fiscal year 2017-18, which was the next batch of portables. This year's phase three budget is $192,000, and it will complete the portable radio purchases. Next year, we would be coming back with the fourth and final phase, which would be replacing the mobile radios. So then all of our radios are compliant and good for the next 10 years. The current radios have been in service since 2008 and do not allow for consistent interoperability communications with some of our mutual aid partners we work with due to a single-band limitation on the VHF radios. These new radios are dual-band. The third phase of this replacement program will continue to replace the radios currently being used in the field with the new platform, the APX 8000XE platform, that has been designed for use with the firefighter's bulky protective ensemble by incorporating large controls and buttons for easy use. The radio has been optimized with noise-canceling technology for use in a noisy environment, often encountered during emergency scenes and during suppression activities. This plan does address two of our focus areas in the city's strategic plan. The first focus area is fiscal responsibility. The fire department has broken the cost of this replacement equipment over a four-year process in order to properly plan for the financial impact of this expenditure and to replace the equipment. The second focus area is quality of life. This extremely important two-way radio equipment allows us to communicate with other first responder agencies during emergencies and with each other in difficult and sometimes through extremely harsh environments. This allows us to make sure that everyone goes home at the end of their shift. This project was budgeted during fiscal year 2018-19 for $192,000, and the cost of phase three is $185,384.65. The expected life cycle of the new portable radios are 10 years, and there is a five-year warranty on each portable. After the warranty expires in five years, the city will be responsible for the repairs of the radios. The remaining budget will cover the expenses for the engraving and labeling of all the radios and installation of chargers as needed. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is just a kind of continuation upgrade of the radios, correct?
Yes, sir. This is our third year out of the four years of completing that project.
Mr. Paul?
I, I just was wondering if they have the guarantee, what do you have to do on them between purchase times? If they're guaranteed five years, they should last 10?
They, they usually have a 10-year shelf life with the manufacturer, and then the technology is changed out, and no longer is parts or any kind of repairs done to them. And end-of-year life here is December of 2019, that's why we've been phasing it in.
Do you have to send them in to somebody, or, okay?
Yes, sir, we do. We have a Motorola Service Center that we send the radios into for repairs.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
For a year, phase four, what are you projecting would be those costs, or do you have that idea?
I believe that should be $69,000 or less for phase four, in final.
This is all CIP expenses, so. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, and Gloria, can I get an ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number 3094, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the purchase of 20 all-band portable radios, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $185,384.65, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Motorola Solutions, Inc. in accordance with the terms submitted to Arizona State Bitlist.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3094, as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, for ordinance 3094?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay. Item I2, consider ordinance 3095.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. The city of Casa Grande currently owns approximately 112 acres of vacant desert land at the northwest corner of Hopi Road and Panal Avenue in Casa Grande. The legal class of the subject property is, is urban ranch, and the adjoining uses of the properties are, to the north, we have vacant land, east, there's vacant land, followed by Panal Avenue. To the south, there's Hopi Road, followed by light residential, and to the rest, there, to the west, there is residential. What we are asking today is to, is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize a listing agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Nathan &amp; Associates to provide commercial brokerage services for this property, which we have called the Linden Property. Nathan &amp; Associates has recommended the soliciting price of $30,000 per acre. The listing agreement is for a period of one year with an option to renew at the city's sole discretion. The cost of this contract will not exceed 5% of the total selling price of the property, so no general funds will be used for this contract. And with that, I'd be open to any questions.
We, we put out an RFP on this, right, and didn't get any local brokerage?
That's correct. We only had one response.
And that was them?
That was Nathan &amp; Associates, correct.
And you think that's a fair?
Yes, we were actually expecting more than 5%, and so it's only 5% if another listing broker is, is brought in, and it'd be 4% if it's done solely by Nathan &amp; Associates, so.
At 30,000 an acre.
You bet 336,000 if you get the, the right price for the acreage?
Million. No, it's 3 million, 360,000.
Yeah, it's 3 million and change.
Move it over, Dick. Okay, I got you. One more.
One more. One more decimal. Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then can I get an ordinance number, please? Gloria?
Ordinance number 3095, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Nathan &amp; Associates, Inc. to provide land brokerage services and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3095, as presented.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote of ordinance 3095, please, Gloria?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is I3. So, ordinance 3096, authorizing submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Transportation. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance in support of the EPS grant agreement with the state of Arizona acting through the Department of Transportation to allow the city to acquire 500,000 in state funds to be utilized for the construction of Selma Highway from Thornton Road West, approximately one-half mile from that intersection. The EPS is a competitive grant program designed to enhance the economic strength and competitiveness of Arizona rural communities by providing funds for roadway improvements to foster job growth. This grant will be, will reimburse costs for qualifying projects, and the Selma Highway project is one of those qualified projects. The grant is administered by Arizona Commerce Authority, along with the Arizona Department of Transportation. The construction of this segment of Selma Highway is related to the proposed Lucid project, and this project is related, excuse me, this project is related to an economic development project that has significant potential for job growth for the city of Casa Grande. It, it will also have an impact on future revenues for the city. And these improvements will help with the tra- help with the traffic efficiency around this project as well. The project is currently under final design, and the construction costs are estimated at $1,503,990. Utilizing the $500,000 grant monies, if authorized, the city's projected cost will be $1,3990. Staff did budget $1,600,000 in this year's budget for, we have that budget authority, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And this is just for the acceptance of the grant funds, a construction contract. Once we go out to bid, we'll come back for final authorization to construct from council.
Is that a half-mile in length, then, what we're doing?
That's correct. A half a mile from Selma at Thornton.
On Selma Highway.
Almost south, south of Tractor Supply. Does it go over that far?
Yeah, it'd be.
Not quite, not quite.
Not quite, stops before Tractor Supply?
Yes.
So is it all across Lucid, the southern piece of that property?
It's the southern piece, but there is a jog in their property that goes west, but it doesn't, isn't impacted by this roadway improvement.
Okay.
Once there, that is paved, to get around some of the issues we talked about prior to this, is there a plan for that, or will that come later in the process, or to take Selma on through where it?
Yeah, we're currently working on two DCRs. The first DCR is for Thornton Road, and then we're also doing the DCR for Burris. And the DCR for Burris is looking at those connectivitys between Thornton, Burris, and Selma, and that will be flushed out through that study.
Any other questions? Okay. This is for free money, so, well, not free. Thanks, parent. Yeah, I know, we're just trying to get something back. Okay. Gloria, can I get an ordinance number, please, for?
Ordinance number 3096, an ordinance of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division on behalf of the state of Arizona, authorizing the mayor to accept grant funds from the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division on behalf of the state of Arizona in an amount up to $500,000 through the Economic Strength Projects Grant Program for the construction of roadway and drainage improvements for the City of Casa Grande, authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division on behalf of the state of Arizona, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3096 as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, next item is item J. Under boards and commissions, we have a reappointment of Lindsay Goss to the airport advisory board with a term to expire on September 8, 2021. Lindsay has already served one term, and she was eligible for a second, and she asked to be reassigned, and we did, we did meet with her. Donna and I met with her, and she's still very enthusiastic about the airport and a big supporter of the airport, so I want to publicly thank her for her service in the past, thank her for volunteering again, and if anyone has any questions or comments on it?
No, she's just, she's a good member of.
Yeah.
She is.
Okay, so that being the case, then, do we need, we need an approval, so somebody want to move to approve her?
I move approving the reappointment of Lindsay Goss to the airport advisory board.
Second.
They can do a voice vote on this, right? Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Lindsay's been reassigned, whether she likes it or not. Okay, item K, ordinances and resolutions and other matters subject to action by the council. We'll start with K-1, resolution 5134. This is a census for 2020.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, believe it or not, it's already a census 2020 time, and we'd like to kick it off with the establishment of a complete count committee. And just a brief background, obviously, census data has many uses. Its main use is for the apportionment of representatives for the House of Representatives for each state, and it's conducted every 10 years. More than $675 billion is distributed annually based on the results of the census. It also helps in forecasting future transportation needs and determines areas available for housing assistance. So the Complete Count Committee, what it is essentially, is appointed government officials and community members with the purpose of developing and implementing a census awareness campaign that motivates their communities to complete the census questionnaire thoroughly and return it in a timely manner. Different entities that make up a typical Complete Count Committee is the local government, the City of Casa Grande would be involved, along with media, education, technology, businesses, faith-based organizations are vital to the success of this campaign, and also workforce If you go to the census website and Google, or Google the hardest account areas, they have this interactive map. And you can see Casa Grande on this map. For the most part, our residents do a very good job of getting the questionnaire, filling it out, and returning it. We have a few areas that have about 65% to 70% return ratio, and so the hardest account areas will be the focus of the, of this Complete Count Committee to try to bring awareness to that area and hopefully stimulate their responses without having to do a follow-up in the summer of 2020. So the timeline moving forward, throughout 2018, we have completed the local update of census addresses. I have been to a few different educational workshops to get trained on the formation of this Complete Count Committee and the census moving forward. And tonight, we come before you to pass a resolution in support of forming a Complete Count Committee. Next year, the formation of the Complete Count Committee will be completed. Early education will be kicking off, and most of the hard work and the legwork begins in 2020. That begins with advertising. Data collection begins in March, and Census Day, April 1, 2020, that's when we need to, where our address will be as of April 1, 2020, that's where we need to fill out our information. And then the counts, in the summer of 2020, will be the follow-up period, and then the council will be delivered to the President of the United States on December 31, 2020. So with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Lisa?
Oh, more of a comment. I just, I'm happy to see that you got on this so quickly, and I got with Larry a while ago. I know it's a topic of many of the conferences, that this is, you know, the issue they're talking about, because there's so much that's affected by the participation of our citizens as far as funding and everything for cities. So two years might seem like a long way, but it's really around the corner. So I'm really happy to see you put this timeline together, and if there's anything, you know, I can do to help, but it is critical that we try to form that committee pretty quick and put a plan together, so thank you.
Yeah, Stephen, I would do to that, if you, if I can do anything to help on that, you know, let me know. We can do video, you know, group video that we can put on our website, whatever. I can't emphasize how important the census numbers are, because it dictates all of our shared revenues that we get from the state, dictates all the HERF funds that we get for our highway funds. It also dictates all of our CDBG funding that we get from the federal government. I mean, everything, everything we get from any outside agency is all determined by this number. So if we miss anybody, we're actually leaving money on the table, so it's super, super important for all of our programs that we get everyone counted.
Ralph?
And along that, I think part of it, too, in terms of the conference and the training, was in relationship to what is the role of the city, not only in terms of the coordination part of it, but also in terms of the funding part of it. There are some cities that have taken an active role in terms of putting that as part of their budget, whether it's staff time and so forth, so I think it would be good for the city to develop a budget that's specifically related to this. That's the first thing. I think to Lisa and the mayor's point is that, I think it's estimated it's about $5,000 per person, kind of per year, per missed individual. So if you look at 10, 10 years, and that's quite a lot of money for someone or a community that goes undercounted. And I think the third thing that's going to be potentially problematic is the question related to citizenship, because if individuals, if that question stays in the census, it's going to be detrimental to individuals who are responding to the census that don't want to answer that question. So I think there's, it's going to be a challenge for communities to ensure that outreach and messaging goes out to, that at least answer the census, even if you don't want to answer that specific question, because the way they're saying is that either way, that census will be counted, but even if you leave that question unanswered. So I think that's part of the messaging we have to get through.
And I just think that, you know, from last time to now, we have, you know, some benefits with social media and those kind of things, so I think that we need to be really creative in how we get that information out. So I'll be looking forward to that information.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay. Seeing none, then, can I get a resolution, please?
Resolution number 5134, a resolution of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, establishing the census 2020 City of Casa Grande Complete Count Committee.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of resolution number 5134 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Gloria, can I get, it's been moved and seconded, can I get a roll call vote of resolution 5134?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item K-2, resolution 5135. That's still you?
Still me, Mayor. Mayor and Council. I'll keep this brief. We've obviously gone over this several times. We are at the point now where we've done the public review process and the public hearing that was conducted on August 6th. We're now here on September 17th to have council action on the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. Nothing has changed since the previous four or five presentations, so moving forward, I will, I know you'd like to hear from me, but I'll be, I'll be back again in two weeks to begin the notice of intent to assess the development impact fee. Before we get to that point, we need to have the council action on the local update, oh, sorry, the land use assumption, too many acronyms in my head from the census as well, and the infrastructure improvement plan. And there is the timeline moving forward with the development impact fee adoption timeline.
Yeah, and this is all part of that required notifications and public hearings and et cetera to get to lower our impact fees.
Correct, it's a statutory requirement.
Okay. Okay. We've heard it.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number 5135, a resolution of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan updates.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5135 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote of resolution 5135?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item K-3, consider resolution number 5131. Planning and development.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends that the mayor and council approve a revised fee for the major general plan amendments. I characterize this fee change as a minor adjustment to better align our fee with our policy of setting development fees at a level that recoups our staff costs in processing the application. Our current major plan, excuse me, general plan, major amendment fee is a base of $2,300 plus $10 per acre. In processing recently a large-scale amendment to our general plan for the Atesa project, which is around 2,600 acres, excuse me, 2,400, staff realized that the resulting fee was going to be in far excess of the staff cost that we were going to incur in processing that application, which caused us to reevaluate the appropriateness of the fee. In the end, we believe that the base, the current fee of 2,300 plus $10 per acre is appropriate for projects that are smaller scale, which we've defined as 160 acres or less, but as you move into larger-scale projects, our cost does not incrementally increase at that same rate. So we're proposing that the fee be adjusted to allow a sliding scale for the larger projects where the $10 per acre fee goes to $1 per acre for projects over 160 acres. We believe that the resulting, revenue resulting from that fee would be more in line with our staff costs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is that customary, is that normal, and have you seen that elsewhere, Paul?
Seen what, Mayor?
That type of sliding scale in other cities, or?
You know, it is customary with, with a lot of communities to set their fees with sliding scales. You know, our, you know, we're a little unique in Casa Grande in that we set our fees not to be equal to other cities, but to recap our, recoup our staff costs, so that's really what we try to do here.
Mr. Powell?
I just, I just want to compliment you, because I think that's pretty good to catch this and say it's going to cost a man too much money, that it wouldn't affect your department to the amount of money that he was going to have to pay. So I think that's great. One of the things that got to mind is on our fee systems, and there's all kinds of fees. Larry, do we compare those with other cities or other communities, just to kind of see where we sit? I assume we do, but I just, I'd never ask.
Yes, several of our fees are benchmarked against other Panal County cities, as well as cities out of the valley primarily, on a regular basis. We do not evaluate every fee side by side, because there are different fees for different cities, but ultimately, we do some level of quality control and benchmarking.
I've also heard, the only other thing I'd bring up is the Evergreen Irrigation District, and I know that the water's coming out much more slowly than it used to, and you're having to pay by the hour, and there's a lot of people concerned that it's too much money, and, and so I know you're aware of that, I just wanted to make you happy by mentioning it.
We're working on that item as well.
Yeah, so this fee would go from $26,000 to about $6,140, so save a $2,000 on this portion, so. That's a good catch, Paul. We're lowering fees, everybody.
You're a hero today.
Today.
Lisa? I said today.
Paul, were there any others, when you were looking at that fee schedule, that may have the same situation? I mean, did you look through it or think that there could be something else? I'm sure you would have identified it, but just curious.
We did not notice anything else, because, you know, a project of 2,400 acres is kind of an outlier. So, no, we, all our other fees are very solid. I'm confident that they reflect the staff costs that we're incurring in reviewing those applications.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5131, a resolution of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as a public record and adopting that certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled "City of Casa Grande City Consolidated Fee Schedule Amendment Effective September 17, 2018."
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5131 as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote on resolution 5131, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item- Yes. Okay, we'll move to item K four, resolution number fifty one thirty.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff would recommend that council adopt a resolution accepting the results from the primary election held on August twenty eighteen, held on August twenty eighth, twenty eighteen. During the primary election, there was a total of 7,336 ballots that were cast. For the mayor, there were a total of votes cast of 6,344 votes. However, there were 97 write-in votes. We did not have any qualified write-in candidates, so we did deduct those write-in votes, which gave us a total of valid votes cast for the office of mayor of 6,247 votes, for the mayor's position. In order to be declared elected or have the majority of votes needed was 2,838 votes. And Craig, well, what happened here?
They said-
Read that wrong, 'cause my, my, my PowerPoint switched on me. That's okay.
Switched two fence.
The total votes needed for the mayor position to be declared elected was 3,124 votes, and Craig McFarland did receive more than the majority of votes. For the city council position, for the city council position, we did have a total of 17,067 votes that were cast. However, again, we had 42 votes for write-in for candidates. We had no qualified write-in candidates, so we subtracted the 42 votes. Total valid votes cast for the city council office was 17,025 votes. In order to be declared elected or receive the majority of votes cast, a candidate had to receive 2,838 votes. We did have Matt Herman, Bob Huddleston, and Dick Powell, who received the majority votes to be declared elected in the primary election. The candidates will be sworn in at the council meeting of December third, twenty eighteen. Since all our positions have been filled, we will not be required to hold a general election. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
When you say qualified write-ins, what does that, how do you?
In order to be a qualified write-in, you have to meet certain requirements. You have to file on time. You have to file everything that a candidate has to file, except for the petitions. We had nobody who filed to become a write-in candidate. So even if they voted for somebody, they weren't counted because they weren't qualified write-in candidates.
Write-ins is not like it used to be. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, then I'll get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number five one three zero. A resolution of the mayor and council, the city of Casa Grande, County of Penal, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August twenty eighth, twenty eighteen.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five one three zero as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote of resolution five one three zero, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item L. We do have a public hearing this evening. It's consider resolution five one three six, adopting a 2017 consolidated annual performance evaluation report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for program year 2017, equivalent to our fiscal year 18. So the city was provided or allocated $348,181 from HUD for our CDBG program, and we have eight activities or projects that were funded. And the first four items there in blue are our public services. So we funded the Casa Grande homeless services for CARA, senior connections for the seeds of hope, advocacy services for victims and homeless women and children with the against abuse incorporated, and also the West Side, I'm sorry for the typo, West Side crime prevention, education, and outreach for our police department. Item five and six are our public improvement and facilities, the Carmac Nat Playground Replacement Project, as well as our sidewalk improvement project. During that year, only 118,257 was from program year 2017. The balance, which is 26,166, came from our surplus from the 2016 program year. Then item number seven is the owner occupied housing rehabilitation, and the last item is for our implementation or planning and administration costs. So the total again is 348,181. We did comply with the requirement. We have 15-day public notice, which started September first to September 16, and staff did not receive any comments or feedback from the, from the public. And so this next slide here shows the accomplishments for that program year. We completed 12 affordable homes under the owner occupied housing rehab, so the cumulative total is 19, from the start of the entitlement program, which is 2015, and our target until June of 2020 is 25. We have assisted 48 homeless persons with bids and utility deposits, down payments, and cleaning kits. Our target was 10. We also completed, again, the sidewalk improvement. That's along Suaro Street, west of Casa Grande Avenue, Okatillo Street, and Center Avenue. I think if you drive down Casa Grande Avenue, you can see some of those newer, you know, corner sidewalks that were improved. We, it benefited over 250 low-income households. Eighty-six victims of abuse and violence were provided advocacy. Our target was 15. And then there were 50 seniors provided with senior services, and our target was 25. PD installed 13 messaging signs on the West Side neighborhood. Over 1,200 youth and 150 adults were engaged to establish rapport and awareness on crime prevention. And just in the community development division, we have assisted over 270 external customers on information related to our CDBG program or referring them to other agencies. So, ooh, sorry. That concludes my presentation.
Good timing.
So I am asking the mayor to open the public hearing at this time.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing, and then if you guys have some questions, we'll do that afterwards. So I'll open the floor to the public hearing on this consideration and the consolidated annual performance evaluation report. Can you just put the dollars back up there on that previous slide? Okay, so this was the allocation for last year's budget, basically. So does anybody have anything that they wanna speak to council about? It is a public hearing. Okay, well, seeing none, then I will close the, the public hearing and throw it back to council and ask if you all have some questions or comments. Ralph?
I'm gonna go back to the previous, or the, I think it's the previous one, where it shows-
This was the first one.
The baseline for getting the targets, the one that has the targets on it.
This one. There you go.
On the ones that, well, first of all, a lot of them went over their targets, which is wonderful, and it shows, you know, they're being utilized. On the ones that were under, what steps will be taken? Are there any that were under? Am I reading this right?
Um-
Some of these go over till 2020 also, so it's hard-
Basically, we have met our target, or even exceeded our target. The only thing that we haven't completed yet is the Carmac Nat Playground Replacement for $50,000. But that is, I think council just, you know-
We just approved that.
Approved the ordinance for that. So it would be installed this year. So I think that's the only one that's missing in our list of, of projects. That's number five.
Any reason there's still money in there for the, for the owner occupied housing rehabilitation?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing?
Yeah.
You still, that's targeted till 2020, right?
The, the target is until 2020, 'cause we have that five-year plan.
That's why it didn't quite meet the target.
Right. Yeah, our target within that five-year plan is 25.
Still have two years to go on that.
Well, I, I think it's great, 'cause I think they all addressed the, the quality of life, and they're doing a great job, so.
And I know I've been, I've been to these owner occupied ribbon cuttings, and they're amazing. They really are amazing. They do a great job, so thank you.
Even the street improvements, I mean, it's amazing what, 'cause I live close to that area where they did it, and it's just amazing how much it can change that area. So, looks great.
I, I just wanna congratulate somebody we're gonna lose here before very much longer for what you've done for the city as long as you've been here. And we're gonna really miss you, and I think you should think about staying, but-
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Powell. It's, it's, it's been a pleasure, you know, working for the city. I'll miss everyone.
Will miss you.
You did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, then I'll accept a resolution number for L one, please.
Resolution number five one three six. A resolution of the mayor and council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the 2017 consolidated annual performance evaluation report.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five one three six as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote on resolution five one three six, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, so that concludes some of our, all of our regular business. We have a, we have no executive session tonight, so we're gonna move into reports. And I'll start to my left here with Mr. Powell first.
Well, thank you. The, I know these two down on the end are gonna talk about it too, but the mariachi performance that was done at the Paramount was, was really, really good. They had a full house, and they were, I didn't realize, but I was sitting by Gilbert, and he told me that that's the first time he'd ever seen an all-girl mariachi group. And they, and they were fantastic. One of them had lived and gone to high school here in Casa Grande, been in the band. But I, I just, the music gets you fired up. It gets your blood going, and, and it's a happy music, and as I say, we had a full house for it. So I hope we have more things like that, cultural events that we can go, but that was a good one. The, I went up today, I was invited to go up to a seminar at ASU that was involving Denver and Phoenix and what they're doing on water in both places. And sadly, biggest, biggest thing they're doing is talking around the real issues and, and conservation. We need to do more conservation, which we do, but that won't solve the issues we're looking at. That won't put more water in the river. It, I just, I wish somebody with big ideas would come up, because water is available in some part of the country that has way too much of it. And it'd be a thousand, thousand miles to put in a pipeline. It would put that in the Green River, and we would have water year-round in seven states that it goes through. But it's, it's, as I say, I wish we had some big thinkers, but I, I was, I was disappointed. It was a good, it was a good meeting, but it, it wasn't a very deep meeting, so I'll pass it along.
Donna?
Just a couple things. Went to the art museum. They had the Lending Hands event, and I was really surprised, pleasantly surprised at how many people were down there supporting it, and they're raising money to do some really great things in our art district. So thought that was really good. The mayor's reading program coming up starts Wednesday. And then the other thing I just wanted to-
They can still sign up?
Yes, they can still sign up. We have 60-plus, and then we, that's without our winter visitors coming back, so we've got a full house. And then Lisa and I were both at an event that I just wanted to mention on Friday night, because I know that some people think it's just a purse auction, but it was a purse auction. The Hemmings Foundation is here in town, and it was after one of our residents that passed away to cancer. And there was 270, probably 269 ladies and one man that attended, but they, they made over $30,000, and this money that they're using is for local people who are going through cancer treatments. And I know of two people in our community that have received their help that has helped them dramatically. And so while it may seem like it's just another event in town, it really does help our local residents that need it the most. So hats off to the Hemmings Foundation on that. And then I think Matt will probably mention the day of shredding, so I won't say anything. And that's it.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mayor.
The day of shredding?
Thank you.
Is coming up on October 13th at the First American Credit Union, 958 East Rodeo. So it's at Rodeo and Tracul at the Strip Center, where a latte vino and, and the 13th, 9:00 AM, and the Dollar Store, October 13th, Saturday morning, 9:00 AM. So be there. You get to shred your first five boxes free. Donations are always accepted for the youth commission, and they will even help you unload your car. And so very little work, just bring your stuff down. And we will also be partnering with the Kevin's Department, which would be, not community services, but sanitation. I always wanna say trash, but I know it's not the right way. The sanitation department. And we'll be having e-cycle as well. So if you have any electronic devices that you need to recycle, old computers, televisions, walkmans, we got cordless telephones last year, pretty exciting. The kids were amazed by some of the stuff they had never seen before. Yeah. So you can bring those too, at no charge. I got to attend the Food Truck Festival on the 7th, and it's gonna be the first Friday at the Little Park with the stage over there by Fagerberg's Wheel Alignment, and I can't remember the streets, across from the Landmark Event Center there, Catty Corner by APS, old building. But anyway, it was fantastic. It was pretty warm that day still, and there was a lot of people there. We had, yeah, it was hot. I was trying to class it up, but yeah, it was, it was hot. But the food was great. There was a live band there. It was all free. You just had to pay to eat if you wanted to eat, but you didn't have to. And it was local food trucks for the most part, and a lot of local people. So that's gonna be the first Friday of every month, and I apologize, I don't know the streets down there better, Mr. Powell, even, what's that, what that street is?
Or by the landmark?
Picacho, yes. Picacho Street, thank you. Yes. So, sorry for my feeling there. And the, for all the local contractors, the Carmac Nat bids are open. It's in the paper, so bid with, bid on that. And I did see local contractors working on the LKQ building today when I drove by, and they're getting really close to be opening over there for the LKQ project on Thornton Road. So that's exciting. And the Rotary Raffle is coming up October 7th. I have tickets. Larry has tickets too. He just doesn't know it, so I haven't given to him yet. But that is another local organization that provides local money to local students for scholarships. So it's October 7th at Jay Warner Funeral Services in the afternoon. So if you want tickets, let me know. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Ralph?
The La Familia Initiative did have the mariachi- The La Familia Initiative did have the mariachi event, and just, you know, we had to get Councilman Powell away from, we wanted to do the gritos, you know, the yellings and stuff, but we got him restrained, and he, he was okay. And the mayor's reading club, I think.
The Mifico, amigo.
I know, that's the way it happens. And the mayor reading club, I, I think it's, it's, it's a great opportunity, and it always challenges you to come up with creative ways to make sure you entertain and read at the same time to third graders or second graders. So, you know, it kind of always challenges how to, how to be more creative about it. And the last thing is, the Pinal County has the Joint Community Health Improvement Plan Meeting. It's for September the 28th. It's going to be held at Banner Casa Grande Medical Center. It's an ongoing joke about Casa Grande, Casa Grande. We, we figure it out.
You got it right.
Yeah, I know. But it's how, how do we, how do we work? See, I tell you. How do we work together to create healthier communities? And it talks about mental health, substance abuse, chronic disease, and so forth. So, a great opportunity.
Yeah, that is good.
Lisa?
Well, you know, Ralph and I are part of the Latino Familia Initiative, and the reason we had this mariachi festival, September 16th, which was yesterday, is Mexican Independence Day. And most people think Cinco de Mayo is the big celebration, but believe it or not, the September 16th celebration is really a bigger deal, you know. So, that was one of the reasons we had the mariachi festival. But I wanted to thank, you know, Gloria, and the Arts and Humanities Commission gave us a grant. APS sponsored the event, as well as the Arizona Commission, Arts Commission. What is that one? They're, I forget the name of it, but it's the statewide arts and humanities. So, you know, we've had several events at the property celebrating the culture, and we've had different films on, you know, the, you know, culture and history and stuff. So, but we were really excited. It was a great event. It was great to see this girl from Casca Grande that's amazing, and her mom and dad are, you know, live right here in town. And they said the first time they heard their daughter sing, she was going to ASU and saw this mariachi group and just said, you know what? You know, she was in the marching band at ASU and didn't like it, so she saw this mariachi group, and she said, well, maybe I'll see if I can play my flute in the mariachi and group. And so, she did, and the mom and dad said the first time they saw her and at a concert, and she had a solo, they were shocked. They had no idea she could sing like that. So, so it was really cool, especially it was an all-female.
Every one of them could sing.
Yeah, they were all good, really, really good. So, we, we do plan on having more of these events. And another piece of that group is we have the Hispanic Leadership Institute, Pinal. We're in the process of recruiting participants. It was going to start this week, but it looks like we're putting it off till next Wednesday. So, we're still looking for applicants. You know, all you do is go on Viadil Soul's website, and it's a great program, 10-week program. That's Wednesday night, 6:00 to 9:00 PM at CAC. So, we're definitely looking for some more people to participate in that. This Thursday is the, the Emergency Assistance Ministries. For those of you that don't know, this is the group that, the faith-based organization, they're the ones that come and do our prayers every meeting. They have, they meet once a month, along with the social service agencies, and that meeting is going to be this Thursday, 11:30 at Compass Church. So, everyone's welcome. You know, again, we have the different agencies and the faith-based communities that come together and share, you know, best practices and things that are going on. So, you just have to go on the United Way website and register, and there's lunch provided. So, and then the Casa Dinner, I don't know who's going to the Casa Dinner, but that's this week. And I think that's it, right? Oh, oh, big one. It's the Casca Grande Union graduates. It's our 100th home year anniversary, so homecoming is September 28th. Casca Grande Union, and they play Vista Grande, right, Matt?
Yes, and the Rotary Cup will be back.
Yes, and it's also the steak fry. The steak fry, the, yeah.
So, come early.
Yes. That's it, sorry.
It's on schedule.
Yeah, worn out thinking about it. Okay, well, I have a couple of things. I just want to reiterate, and John brought it up this evening, but the Lucid Announcement is a huge, huge deal for the city. It's a billion dollars investment. And somebody, I think on your thing, John, said, well, will any of that money be spent in Casca Grande? I thought that was an interesting comment. Well, I can tell you that probably 700 million of the billion will be spent on a plant in Casca Grande. So, the answer to that question is yes, which I know you already answered the question, so. I did have a Pinal County I-11 Coalition Meeting this morning, which was kind of interesting. We got an update from the state engineer. The environmental impact Tier One studies will be done probably in December. So, that'll be the first steps to establishing the I-11 corridor between Wickenburg and the Mexican border. So, that's the section that they're working on. There was a section that just opened in Nevada, so I-11 does now exist. There's, there's about a 22-mile piece in, in Nevada up to Las Vegas now. So, it's moving forward, and it's, it's still a long-term project, but it's, it's, it's starting. We had interviews tonight, Donna and I, for boards and commissions. We interviewed for the position of the Arts and Humanities Commission tonight, and a young lady by the name of Adriana stepped up and volunteered, and a lovely, lovely young lady. She's a senior at Vista Grande High School. So, you're not, as long as you're 18, you can, you can sign up for these boards and commissions, so I would encourage anybody to do it. She's, she's full of, full of energy, and I think she'll be a great addition to the, to the Arts and Humanities group. So, we do have some openings coming up. We have one actually now for Board of Adjustments. The applications are due September 21st, so if anyone is interested in that, it'll be a partial term because it's filling someone who resigned. And then we also have some vacancies coming up on the planning and zoning in November. So, those will be posted on the website, so keep an eye out for those. And then, just to kind of wrap up a couple of things, the Recreation Center is coming along real well. I don't know if you've been out there to see it, but I know that the council is going to take some tours this week, so we'll, we'll be able to report next time on the status and when it might be opened. Private joke, sorry. I do have a meeting this week also on affordable housing, so we're going to be getting together with a local owner of a, I'll call it a mobile home park, but that's the wrong thing. What do they call them now? Manufactured home park, that he is redoing. So, we're looking at possibilities there for more affordable housing in town. GPEC meeting this week, so the Board of Directors first quarter is a, it'll be a big meeting. It's the Greater Phoenix Economic Council on Economic Development. And then we have the ADOT Board meeting up in Florence this week, and that's about it. Also, I wanted to let everybody know, there is a, a safety seminar out at the airport, and we're also going to do a ribbon cutting on this Live ATC, which is a, which is a recording audio tracking system, voice tracking system that actually will track all the air traffic around Casca Grande. It's, it's primarily for airports that don't have towers, and so it's a safe, good safety addition. So, we are the first to actually implement it in our area, and that'll be kicked off on Saturday at the airport.
Can I mention one more thing real quick? I forgot. And you're done.
Wait a minute, says I'm done. Don't forget, mark your calendars, Veterans Day, Saturday, November 3rd, 10:00 AM. Parade starts on Brown, so if you're interested, take a look at our website, give us a call. And then a reminder also, the Casca Grande Mosaic Festival is coming up also on Sunday, November 4th. So, that'll be a kind of a action-packed weekend, so mark the 3rd and the 4th. Those should be some great events. It's free, both are free. We'll be giving away like 500 hot dogs and water and potato chips on, on Sunday, the 4th, so come, come and eat some hot dogs. Mr. Powell?
I was just going to mention, recently, the CAC had a strategic plan explained, and there was, there was a good turnout from around the county, different communities. And I know, Richard, your mother was there. I don't see if Richard's here anymore, but.
Yeah, he's here.
He is.
Okay. But anyway, it was, it was pretty neat. She went through what they're trying to do, and she is working hard to try to, to get a workforce program continue to go and to grow. And I mentioned what we had heard up at Cities and Towns, so I think Lisa and I will make a, a scheduled visit with her before very long, so.
Anything else? All right, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. City Council meeting is adjourned.